George, are we about set for countdown?
Yes, everything on my end.
Awesome, thanks. Just waiting on Peter. At the appropriate time.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, otherwise it could create feedback. Peter, Paula, you guys by ready? All right, well, I appreciate that, but it is, it is seven, so I'll count down. Yeah, yep.
That was Minnesota's move.
Yeah, you know, I can learn. I can learn. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Good evening, it is 7:00 PM on Monday, September 20th, 2021, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's board meeting live in the boardroom are boardroom, board members: Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, Alurgus Meshek, Christine Malik, and Crystal Braucki. I am Board Chair Tim Paulus. Also joining us at the table is Superintendent Steve Dr. Janowski. And also, also at the table is Board Secretary and Assistant to the Superintendent Cassandra Quam. The Richfield Public Schools' mission statement is that we strive to inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel, and we'll keep that at the folk, that focus at the center of our discussions this evening. Thanks to all of you for joining us here live and in the boardroom, and to those who are watching via livestream tonight, thank you for being with us. We especially appreciate that, as people bear witness to us doing the work in public. It is, it is public work, but we do it in public, so you can give witness. It's, it's essentially our meeting, though, so we'll do what we can to keep it flowing. While not every item on the agenda is of interest to each person, we have to give them all their due attention, and we ask you to allow us to do that. Thank you. With that, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cole, and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We move now to the information and proposals, non-action items. Tonight, we have public comment, a reminder that these occur on the second meeting of each month, and instructions on how to sign up are on the district website, under the school board link, under menu about school, and the school board. Tonight, we have a few people signed up, and so just to prep you for how that will go, we will like, we do not engage in dialogue with the speakers. However, it is possible that we make, make statements at the end, or follow up with the speakers, since it's for those that we have contact info. Thank you to all who are signed up to share your comments with us, and while we're expressing gratitude, we'll thank you in advance for following our Board Policy 216 and Guideline 216.1. In brief, I will highlight the following from those documents. The time allotted will be three minutes per speaker, with an additional three minutes allocated if interpretation is utilized. Ms. Quam will monitor the time, and will hold up signs to give you a warning of 30 seconds, and also time is up. At the conclusion of the three minutes, we ask the speakers to wrap up quickly, so that we can give appropriate time to the other speakers, as well as the other items that are on the agenda. We'll recognize one speaker at a time, so please, we ask that you give those people their full, their time without interruption, if you could. Speakers should not include names of Richfield Public School employees, their titles, locations, et cetera, for your own legal protections, if, if you are, you know, lodging complaints about them. To be clear, that is actually for your legal protection, as well as the board's. If you are complaining about an individual, we may ask you to stop and, and rule your comments out of order. Praise of staff members, of course, is always welcome. Issues related to malperformance of a district employee should be made in writing to the Human Resources Department, and we trust that you understand personal attacks will not be allowed. With that, we'll move to the first speaker, and our order is, in order that people signed up, and I believe we have Ginny Morin. And we... Um, I... Yeah, while, while you're giving testimony, that's fine, or giving, giving a statement, that's fine, and we want to make sure the microphone is turned on, I...
There's a button.
Thank you. Perfect. Thanks, Ms. Morin.
Thank you. Members of the Richfield School Board, Superintendent Janowski. Tonight, you're going to hear from members of our community talk about the current curriculum that Richfield uses for sex ed. Several moms connected with countless people from different backgrounds to discuss how this curriculum sabotages deeply held cultural, family, and faith beliefs. I want to look at the board's policy, and how this curriculum fails to execute on that policy. First, I applaud the board's thoughtful crafting of the five guiding pillars: the academic potential, value in extracurricular activities, the executing a shared mission and vision, embracing culture, and communicating as a trusted partner. I'm going to focus on the last two, and I think you'll see how this curriculum actually works against the board's policy. This board's policy is, on culture and religion, is clear. On culture, schools are to be warm, welcoming, and respectful. With regard to religion, no curriculum shall disparage any religious belief, and teaching cannot inhibit religion. Yet, this curriculum denies religious tenets, such as God created us perfectly, by telling kids that, or implying that, you might not know if you're a boy or a girl. It coaches children into exploring and role-playing behaviors other than what they know to be true, or what their family or faith have taught them. This both inhibits and disparages their religion and culture by substituting secular values for what they've been taught by their parents. Now, whether you agree with a faith institution's values is not the point. Schools should not systematically erase the values instilled by parents and faith using a curriculum that openly admits to pushing a secular value system. Given our diversity of culture and opinion, I just have to wonder why we aren't teaching the basic principles of, no one has the right to touch you, and all people are valuable and should be treated with kindness and respect. Teach kids that they don't need to agree with somebody's beliefs, choices, or opinions to treat them with value and respect. More importantly, this criss, curriculum also destroys the trusted partner pillar that the board has sought to build. As parents and community, this pillar is vitally important to us. We need to partner with you. But this curriculum pits schools against parents in a standoff regarding whose values should be instilled into our children. The curriculum is taught using an opt-out premise while avoiding transparent details on what's about to be taught. You're about to hear, it's extreme. And this sneak attack teaching of ideology that conflicts with family values destroys that trusted partner mission. This type of teaching has no place in our schools. I believe that the board has made this clear in their guiding principles, yet here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Eckelberry.
My name is Catherine Eckelberry. This summer, after voicing a concern, I was invited by the superintendent to review the sex ed curriculum for Richfield School District. The few days I spent reading through the Advocates for Youth 3Rs curriculum, it was clear, parents are intentionally being deceived and misled about what their children are being taught. The letters sent home to parents by the school district claims that this is age-appropriate for grades K through 12. When is it age-appropriate to teach a kindergartner what a clitoris is, and to tell them it is a very sensitive little area? When is it age-appropriate to coach sixth graders in asking consent for sex, and tell them that they know best when to engage in sex? When is it appropriate to require ninth graders to role-play a queer couple discussing sex? Everyone deserves to be treated with kindness and respect, no matter their race, gender, religion, or sexual orientation. But this curriculum goes far beyond teaching respect and tolerance, and is intentionally confusing children about their gender and sexual orientation. In fact, in 2016, the American College of Pediatricians declared, quote, "Conditioning children to believe the absurdity that they or anyone could be born into the wrong body, and that a lifetime of chemical and surgical impersonation of the opposite sex is normal and healthful, is child abuse," end quote. The First Amendment was designed to protect freedom of religion, so how is it being honored when our children are being taught ideas that are a direct offense to deeply held convictions of the different faiths represented in this community, and told that religious websites should be treated as an unreliable source of information when it comes to sexual health? The Richfield Public Schools letter also states that parents or guardians are the primary health and safety educators for their children. We agree with that statement. I am here tonight because the sexuality promoted in this curriculum is unacceptable. It promotes early sexualization of children, encourages promiscuous and deviant sexual behavior, undermines parental authority, and is destructive to deeply held religious convictions of our community. Regarding children, Jesus made his position clear when he said, "But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to stumble, it would be better for him to have a millstone hung around his neck and be drowned in the depth of the sea." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Quist.
This is difficult.
You got it. Hearings are still in place.
Okay. I'm Julie Quist with the Child Protection League. We're a Minnesota nonprofit that defends children against exploitation, indoctrination, and violence. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak about the K-12 curriculum that the district has adopted, rights, respect, responsibility, the three Rs, by advocates for youth. Three Rs is one of the most explicit curricula available. It sexualizes children and normalizes sexual behavior at a young age, teaching sexual pleasure, masturbation, anal and oral sex, and that consent is all that is needed. The alarming negative effects of early sexual activity are absent. For example, early sexual activity greatly increases a girl's vulnerability to STDs. An immature cervix has one layer of protection from invading STDs. A mature cervix has 30 to 40 layers of protection. You maybe didn't know that. Three Rs describes pornography use as normal activity for teens, when in fact pornography is damaging and addictive to undeveloped brains. In summary, three Rs is dangerous to young people. This immersion in explicit sexual material for students is being sold as a good thing, which, with claims that it reduces pregnancy and STDs and increases condom use. But teaching K-12 students it's okay to be sexually active at a very young age is obviously dangerous. Proponents ignore the data proving this, and programs like the three Rs are not effective. The Institute for Research and Evaluation conducted a comprehensive study of the effectiveness of programs such as this. Out of 60 school-based studies, no credible evidence of effectiveness was found for sustained reductions in teen pregnancy or STDs. There was no evidence of effectiveness for increasing consistent condom use. Failure rates included 88% failure to delay teen sexual initiation, and 94% failure to, to reduce unprotected sex. 12% of these programs found significant negative effects on adolescent sexual health and/or risk behavior. Claims that explicit sex education has been proven effective are not supported by the evidence. In fact, there is far more evidence of failure than success, and it has produced an alarming number of negative outcomes for children. Thank you, and I have references to those studies that, on, and information that I referenced, that I can send to you, email to you, if you'd like me to, so I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aaron Collins.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment. I'm Aaron Collins, a parent of a kindergartner at RPS, and also a mechanical engineer with an expertise in aerosol science. I've been using this expertise to help promote the use of better high-filtration masks, both through testing and educational videos. My work has garnered attention from various publications, including the Wall Street Journal, Washington Post, and Scientific American. To learn more, Google Aaron Collins, the mask nerd. However, I'm not here to talk about masks. I'm here to advocate for other important technology that we have at our disposal: portable in-room HEPA filters. Delta is different. The Delta variant is two times more contagious than the original COVID strain, so the plans made in the spring will need to be updated. Many parents, including myself, recognize the strong importance of in-person education, and are willing to accept the risk, but also want to minimize it as much as practically can, and we have a low-cost, readily-available technology that can help. Tools such as universal masking, vaccinations, and improvement in air handling systems are part of the Swiss cheese model, in which a variety of not-so-perfect mitigation methods are used together to reduce the exposure and limit the spread within, spread within the school and community. However, in many schools, these mitigations are not available. In our elementary and middle schools, vaccinations are not yet approved for that age group, and during lunch, children in all schools have to remove their mask to eat. This reduces up to two layers from our Swiss cheese model. However, we can use our technology to help with that, and replace a layer. In this case, portable in-room HEPA filters, which are effective at removing infectious aerosols. These devices are relatively inexpensive, less than $10 to $20 per student, per year total cost. Quiet, less than 50 dB, or around the same noise levels as a typical, a typical home refrigerator, and can provide significant improvements to the air quality. They also benefit by providing a better mixing of the air within the rooms, which enhance our current HVAC systems, so building on the improvements that are already in place by the district. But don't take my word for it. ASHRAE, the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers, in their COVID-19 school guidance explicitly state as recommendation to introduce terminal or portable all-electric HEPA UV machines in each classroom. This was used and mirrored by John Hoppeian's School of Public Health, the CDC, and in the MDH Ventilation Guidance for Schools. Note, many are clear that they use not as a supplement for poor ventilation, but as an additional layer of protection. Others in the aerosol community, including leaders and infectious aerosol researchers Don Milton, Kimberly Prather, and Lindsay Marr have been vocal advocates for them. Today, in fact, two op-eds were published, one by Dr. Alex Huffman from the University of Denver, a second by the plurality of professors in North Carolina State University, Civil Department of Civil Engineering. Both advocate for their local school districts to plan and install portable HEPA filters. However, we need not look very far either, at the, as the adjacent school districts of Bloomington and Dinah have done the same as well. My request is for the district to reexamine the use of portable HEPA units in RPS, support and plan for expedient deployment of these, to help protect students, teachers, staff, and the community as a whole. I can't stress enough that the time is of the utmost importance. We must be proactive, and even if vaccinations open up for five to 11-year-olds at the end of October, most will not be fully vaccinated before the end of the calendar year. I also will gladly offer my knowledge and expertise to anyone at the Richfield Public Schools that want to discuss the science implementation, perform building measurements using CO2 or direct aerosol measurements, as well as answer any questions on this topic. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that concludes our, our public comments. Before we move on, I do want to clarify some things. Now, the board does not actually know all the details of our curriculum, I think I can say that with confidence. We do support the curriculum that we have, having been recommended to us by the administrative team, in whom we place a lot of trust, but hold them to that trust as well. Our health curriculum has been in place for a number of years. Sexual health component of the health curriculum is introduced at elementary school, and does continue annually through a student's senior year. And each year, content is introduced that is age-appropriate. For example, younger students learn about making and keeping friends, appropriate boundaries, and yes, basic body parts. Older students learn about consent, responding to peer pressure, media awareness, healthy friendships and relationships, and violence prevention. These are all part of comprehensive sexual health education. Teaching sex, sexual education is not about teaching kids how to have sex, or showing them graphic photos. Young people do have access to so many negative messages in our culture, through, through the internet, social media, et cetera, and they deserve to have trustworthy information in adults to guide them through these often confusing and important topics in an age-appropriate way. Our sexual health program and educators do provide this, in partnership with parents and guardians, who of course are the primary health and safety educators for their children. With that, you know, parents are provided opt-out information before, and, and, and clear details on the, on the information in advance of, of each aspect of the curriculum. They're able to opt their child out of specific, of specific content, or all of the content, and no student is required to participate. And the curriculum is delivered by trans-school social workers at the elementary level, and by health teachers at the secondary level. With that, that, that would, that would conclude my statement on the facts about our program, and, you know, the, the history behind it. It is not new. It's been in place for a number of years, and we would welcome any questions or comments to reach out to me, and let me know if you'd like to have further discussion about that. Thank you. With that, we'll move on now to the superintendent update. Dr. Janowski.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Paulus. There are three things in the superintendent update this evening. We have an update on the start of school and the first weeks of school. Community feedback, as we have ESER III funding. We have been doing survey work, and Drs. Clarkson and Mr. Holgy will have a conversation about the feedback we've had for ESER funding, and then we'll have an intro draft for feedback in regard to my goals for the school year. And as a reminder, we're aligning our overall strategic plan, my goals, and, and then we do that across leadership throughout the organization. And so as we did at our board meeting prior to, our board meeting prior to school starting, we are giving our update for school start, and obviously, as we are all here masked, we know that we are dealing with COVID. dealing with COVID. Case rates, and this was up through Friday when the board packet went live, we had three confirmed cases in the previous 14 days. However, I believe we could add another five to that at this point, give or take. More than that, seven? Eight?
I think it's 11.
Okay, so we have an additional 11 confirmed cases from Friday through Monday. And so obviously, the Delta variant is certainly adding cases to our community at this time. We do have case rates going up to, if we recall last year's learning model, and our goal is to maintain school, we do have around 50 per 10,000 in the city of Richfield. And so that was a very concerning number, and we have been advised that COVID is expanding throughout our community. We do have a significant number of vaccines that have occurred in Richfield. Ages 18 and above, 81%, and our 12- to 15-year-olds are at 77%, and 64% for our high school juniors and seniors. As we also heard, we are hopeful that vaccines are available to five- to 11-year-olds, because obviously, that is one of the additional forms of protection. As we look at our overall enrollment, we have worked, and you all are aware, we've worked to adjust our elementary class sizes with one of those strategic plan goals of maintaining our class sizes as low as possible within our budget. We made our last shift just on Monday of this week, keeping our class sizes in line with board guidance and what we were looking for. Overall enrollment is slightly above projection at this point, but we'll call this a very, very preliminary snapshot. As we all know, October 1 is the actual count that comes through. And so this is just a snapshot that occurred at one point in time on Wednesday of last week, and these numbers change quite significantly as we move ourselves forward. The other thing to note is that some of those numbers also do not fully include our online students. And we are partnering with Minnesota Virtual Academy and Northern Star Online to provide our online curriculum. And so this is just a snapshot of the 81 students. So again, as of Wednesday of last week, who had signed on, 27 middle schoolers, 22 in our high school, and another 32, I believe, in our elementary schools, 33. And so we're seeing only 81 of the Richfield community has signed up for online at this time. Construction updates, and I'm going to tag into talking about air quality at this point. Obviously, we've been in the midst of a very significant upgrade of all of our buildings. We are in the final year of our construction project. All the public spaces are complete. We actually did open the school year without the kitchen prepared at Sheridan. We're delivering meals as we had done in the past, but now all of our public spaces are complete. And when we use the term "complete," that is, we'll call that the "soft completes." There's a very large punch list at each of the sites, but the major transformation has occurred. All public spaces done at Central, RMS, all public spaces except the Auditorium and Teen Tech Center, and then all other spaces are also substantially complete. In that regard, it's also important to note that we have overhauled the entire HVAC system at all of our sites, including at RDLS, for example, which has an extremely advanced HVAC system. And as we've worked with our air quality team members, some of the goals of COVID are approximately six times transferring the air in an hour, and we are knowing that we are at or above that in each of our buildings. And so we continue to work on that. And as Mr. Holdy is working, he is also working with our air quality experts to talk about would air purifiers be in addition to this or something that we should consider. So Mr. Holdy is doing work in that particular area. We've also launched social-emotional work in all of our buildings, knowing that our kids had quite significant interruptions to their education. So we really prioritize community building, expectations, relationship building, and rituals and routines across all of our buildings, really making sure that, you know, a ninth grader may not have stepped in the building for a year, year and a half. And so we're really working to no names and really welcoming every kid and help make sure that they are feeling at home and part of the community. High school itself started with the first two days of full community time, using AirPods and advisors, to make sure that they're really prioritizing that relationship-building work, to get to know things at our high school. And the middle school followed a similar model, just to make sure that we are really setting things together as one large community. And then some of those larger things that we've been working on, a reminder that at least through the end of this year, all students are receiving free meals. That's breakfast and lunch. Exciting event, something that hasn't happened in multiple years. The high school varsity team won their home opener, 35 to 14. Go Football Team. I believe we have one of the coaches sitting in the room with us. So it's a great way to start the season, better than the Vikings or the Packers. So well done, Richfield Spartans. RDLS hosted Carnival and Bingo Nights. We do have evening events occurring with, again, safety protocols in our district. And then we have the Richfield High School Cross Country Fundraiser and the Girls Tennis Team 100 Sets Fundraiser. So we are rolling to have as much of our full school experience as humanly possible, the entirety of our program offered to our kids. We also similarly have some pretty exciting things coming up. Homecoming Parade, 10 o'clock on Saturday, followed by Parade of Schools. And so Parade of Schools is our opportunity to share with the community what their investment has purchased in regard to the significant overhaul and remodels of our buildings. And so we've been communicating out about that. Dates are up there and being sent out for each of our buildings. Homecoming Football Game ends the full week of homecoming activities, and that's on October 1 at 7:00. We also have Walk and Bike to School Day, and believe it or not, we are already looking at things on the calendar, like conferences that are coming up before too long. So we are into a full school year and really hitting the ground running. So with that, I will pause and see if there are any questions, comments, or anything I can answer.
All right. Thank you. Covered a wide range of topics, so we'll open it up to the room and see if anyone has any questions or comments for the superintendent. I'll look to the right side of the room first.
So Steve, did I hear you say that you, that Mr. Holdy is evaluating the air quality technology that our public speaker talked about, or he's...
Yes, yes. There is. So there was a request for one of our specific buildings to review the option of adding air purifiers on a donation. We looked at that from an electric perspective, from a noise perspective, and we had some pretty significant concerns. Mr. Holdy met with the group on Friday, and there was some additional information shared with him. And so he is now reviewing air quality and reviewing some of the information shared with him and working with our air quality experts. And then he will come back, and we'll have that next conversation about, is this something that we, or what do we do with this information and what do we do with this request?
Well, that, that's really a lot of like an administrative procedure, process, but is the board, are we going to discuss it again when we're here, or should we direct questions to...
I would direct questions to administration. The board policies covering have to do with conservation and small appliances. Those are a couple of things that are there. Administration is empowered to take specific action in regard to student safety in those areas. So what we're doing is we're really thoroughly vetting the offer and determining, you know, what are the positives, what are the negatives, and is that something that we could support?
All right. And then one last question, because things are changing so rapidly with the pandemic and kids being at school, and it's not surprising, right? Like we, what kind of thresholds do we have to decide when we're going to move to the next restrictive space within our policies? Like, what would trigger what? Because I think we talked generically about this is our procedure, but then in real life, it turns out that there's a lot of like things attached to one thing. So there's obviously a lot of things to pay attention to, a lot of things that are changing. So I just wanted to reassure the public, parents, of things that we are doing, but also to be honest with each other about, in our community, about what are the things that we are still not, you know, working on.
Right. So one of the things that's very different from last year is last year, the governor had set a clear threshold at which we were expected to close schools. That doesn't exist at this time. And so the main component we are working with because of the increase in vaccinations and masks is community spread. What we do is we partner with Bloomington Public Health as our main health partner, and we coordinate with them in regard to contact tracing and what is occurring in schools, and they provide significant consultation. So they don't have, the hard part of my answer is, I don't have an exact number or anything that will say this is what we would do to shut a classroom or to shut schools. But we would certainly not be doing anything in that nature without advice from Bloomington Public Health, who helps us in each of those conversations and creates recommendations.
That worries me. And I wish we had a plan. I think it is within our, I don't want to say power, but to really have a plan. And I say this because I think we did a really good job last year when everything was even newer and I would say super scarier. I mean, I guess it's not a spectrum for scariness right now. But in a way, it was unknown, right? And so I would hate to see us be taken by surprise or have parents be taken by surprise who have to decide, like, what do I do with my children now? I would like us to follow on the same thing we did before, where we had plans for every little thing, and it wasn't perfect. But I think in a, you know, from comparison with surrounding areas, I think we really had a very sound, we seem to have found like the right level of both being careful, but also keeping kids in classrooms. And I would hate to see us backtrack and then have a lot of chaos around that. So...
So we're, so, yes, it is hard to say at this particular data point, we would do something or make a transition. Obviously, I have been in Richfield. This is my eighth year. I try to be very transparent and really show where things are going. If you were to ask me, and again, information always changes, as we know, I would not anticipate us closing unless that was a requirement. And so there are reasons that a health department might suggest that schools could close or would have to close, and we aren't in control of that information or that recommendation. Otherwise, every piece of information from every superintendent I have communicated with, at this point, given the information and given our health recommendations, our significant precautions, our upgraded air handling systems are, we should remain open unless we have a significant community spread that requires us to close. And given that we have amongst the newest air handling systems in any of the surrounding areas, and we have been masked from day one, and we have amongst the highest vaccination rates actually of surrounding districts, I would assume that we are not going to be the first district, and I'm going to do a Craig Holdy knock-on-wood right now, that would have challenges outside what other districts are seeing. So I understand it is hard to not know. I don't know any superintendent that's talking about closing schools at this point. And so...
And I don't, I don't, I don't see that happening for all of the things that you said. Like, all of the things you said were part of my own consideration as a parent to send my child to school or not. I just felt better before when there was like a, there was a plan. There was like, well, if this happens in this many days, like, I mean, I was so amazed and spent the whole year talking about how great the plan and preparedness and change management was here. And now we feel that, you know, just like the same way that we just, we close schools when it's too cold or too snowy and dangerous for kids to come, you know, I think, I think that a lot of, I think it is our responsibility to protect, you know, the thousands of kids who are enrolled here from like things that are beyond their control as well, such as the weather.
Yes. So what I'll say is, if you are asking for a specific number, so that came from the governor, that came from the health department last year, it doesn't exist now.
Right.
Right? Every single other precautionary measure, and so when you say a plan, we have plans for all of these things. All of the things we have done and all of the safety components we have put in place, and our contact tracing, and our communication, and all the interventions, those are all still part of our overall COVID safety plan. We have a published plan on the state website, our state, our Safe Schools Learning Plan. What we don't have, and yes, if you call it connected to a snow day, just like a snow day, we don't have a number of inches, we don't have a specific degree, and we don't have a specific infection rate that is going to say we are absolutely closing. And that can create both anxiety and that can also create a sense of security. And so that is the one component of our plan that you are correct, is not clearly laid out. And if you are suggesting, or if the board suggests that that is something you would like crafted, I think we should probably have a conversation about that. I'm not sure that that is what I would push us to do at this time. But we will absolutely continue to monitor and be very close in contact with our health departments.
What I would suggest is, because I think, I think you're absolutely right, that the parameters are so different. Obviously, it's likely that the public health parameter would relate to ICU capacity and death, right? And so the infection rate that is going to correspond with an unacceptable sort of strain on the healthcare system that would lead to a lot of people dying is completely different than what it would have been in the spring, right? Or last fall. So that's why those numbers don't exist. However, I think it does make sense, Paula. It would be reasonable. I mean, it's not under our, as educators, it would not be under the school district's purview to be thinking about those public health things. So that makes total sense, Steve, that you wouldn't be trying to come up with that number. However, I think what could make some sense would be the thought on what is our contingency in terms of transitioning to distance learning for large numbers of kids? Because that could be something that we could see even without having to close, that we'd have a lot of kids doing distance. So, I mean, does that seem like what you're asking?
That means something.
Because we're really, I mean, I think it's true from a public health perspective. It's really not our call or Steve's call, but it is our job to try to support transition in the event that we have large numbers of kids who are not able to be in our buildings. So...
Right. That is a fair point. We do have things for small groups of kids. We do have quarantines occurring right now as we speak.
Right. Because that's going to happen. We know that's going to happen, and that's going to be a flux. We're going to have kids in, who are missing school because of various, you know, reasons. So, yep.
Yeah. And we do have, I mean, we do have the contingency plans and the things we've used in the past for all the various options that have come up, right? And so we would figure out a transition based on our past history to distance learning, several days off, planning coordination with the, coordination with the union, distribution of technology, and a switch over to full schoolage and the work that we already have in place. And so the good thing, and I guess what I would, what I would remind us is, is that everything we are doing this year, we did last year, right? So these are, these are a reiteration and a return to the same types of things, which we can enact much quicker than we might otherwise, because these are all things that we've done before. So like, we have contingency plan for meal delivery, same kind of thing, if we found ourselves in that particular position.
And I want to add, like, I don't feel concerned, I mean, I'm concerned as any other parent is concerned. But I'm also, the fact that we did it last year is really reassuring to me about how healthy and how, you know, for what it was, right? Like, I think we had a successful year in the middle of, and, you know, from the very beginning with the kids who, you know, who wanted to come, came. The ones whose families didn't want to send them, stay home. And it wasn't perfect by any means. So I just want to make sure that we continue on that and that any learnings that we have from last year, we are able to consider and incorporate into any changes. I think that the time calls for like being more proactive than ever, and this thing has done a really, is really good at that, being proactive and anticipating. And I think I said last year, like reading the future or seeing the future. So that's just like my encouragement that we continue to do that, and that please let us know if there's anything that needs to be done or added differently to support staff into following through with the guidelines that we have established in case I volume changes and whatnot. Like, this is a very fast-moving. And I'm going to stop talking now because I've taken a lot of the floor. But thank you for your responses and your comments. It's always nice to hear about the logic behind some things that don't make a lot of sense to me outside of the medical field.
But it's fair to say, along those lines, we have the decision tree and the action path all planned out. We just don't have, we don't have the numbers like we did last year that say, when this happens, you go here.
We have all the same things we've had in the past. We just don't have a hard deadline saying, boom.
And last year, that was given to us by...
The governor.
The governor and the Department of Health, et cetera. And this year, they've not come up with actual numbers that say, I mean, I think at the rate we just talked about, we would, if this were last year, we'd be in hybrid.
Right.
Correct. We're looking for a move to distance.
So we'd be transitioning to hybrid or move to distance.
But we have masks, we have vaccinations at seventy, eighty percent.
Correct. So, but, but we don't have a, an issue, you know, so it would be up to us then to come up with numbers and we're not qualified to come up with numbers, right? So.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to consult and we will reflect on this input and we will, we'll definitely keep ourselves moving, be as transparent as possible.
We'll move on to Director Tensing, questions, comments on the back to school?
Wow.
Paula.
I've lost all of them. Paula, you've stolen everything I had.
I drank too much coffee. I couldn't resist.
I'm going to, I'm gonna pass the baton to Ms. Mieschek.
I don't have any comments or questions, but thank you for the update.
Ms. Malick?
Um, I just liked all the summary of all the things going on and it's exciting to see everybody back in buildings and activities at times. And there's some level of normalcy for our kids and it's really nice to see some of that, so that's great. And I'm very excited about the parade of schools, so. Those are my comments, no questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna echo the excitement, especially about the week ahead and just all of the things that are happening and just, uh, it, it feels really nice to be able to be together again. Uh, I have two, uh, what I believe are short questions. One is, um, is it accurate that families and students could move to one of our online options at any time if they felt compelled to do so, given, uh, just their own level of comfort and safety?
Who are we, who are we waving to?
Mr. Holgy is walking to the microphone.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, we're currently working with, um, our two online providers just as far as the right timing.
Okay.
Um, as far as the transitioning, because there's a certain level of transitioning into the online programming that's different than a classroom environment. And so we wanna make sure that if individuals are moving into that online environment, it's at an appropriate time where they can transition it.
Okay.
So it's not anytime. What we've communicated to the community is that grading periods would be the most appropriate time to do that, but we're continuing to evaluate what that would look like.
Okay.
And if there are other options. Minnesota Virtual Academy specifically has, um, about like another opportunity where there's a cohort coming in in October.
Good.
Um, just so there's that cohort option, but, um, it will also depend somewhat on staffing and it may be otherwise.
Yeah.
But the goal is to make sure it's successful.
Yeah, it makes sense that on demand is not feasible on lots of levels and I think important to be really clear about what those windows are, especially given how quickly things are changing so that people feel like they know when they're gonna need to make that decision and actually have the opportunity to do so. And then my second question, um, is, uh, actually by virtue of being on the board every once in a while, I get one of the emails that goes out to, you know, a school community when there has been an exposure. Um, and one of the things that I've noticed in a couple of them is that the number of days that somebody has been in the school community and potentially exposed others is longer than I would have expected. Like we are talking three days, four days, and I can imagine that feels a little bit unsettling and I know that there's a very clear protocol for notifying close contact. But I, I'm curious if that is different than last year? If there are things that we're doing to encourage people that if you do not feel well, we actually do need you to stay home, the same way that I think people were pretty good at, at the end of last year. I, it, it was surprising to me to see some of those date ranges and I guess I'm curious to know more about that and Dr. Clarkson is going to educate me.
The short answer is, um, we're doing it the same.
Okay.
Um, it all depends on when we are notified of a positive case of COVID. So I think that one of the things that's happening is exposures happen and, um, symptoms don't start for a while. And so that timeline of when they're in school till when they actually get a positive test is longer. We are doing a, um, big push over the neck, we've done it all along, but a real strong campaign to say, we want schools to be a symptom-free zone. I think that that is one of the biggest challenges that we have right now is sending children to school when they've got a, you know, a stuffy nose and a little sore throat and parents are like, but I gave them some medicine and they seem better. So we just need to do a little bit more education about, please keep, keep, stay home, staff, stay home students if you're not feeling well. But the timeline has been the exact same.
Are the number of those potential exposure dates similar to what they were last year then and it just didn't jump out to me as much?
You know, I guess I'd have to go back and look, I just finished doing some reporting tonight. And I think what stood out, stood out differently for me this year from last year is, um, how the, you know, like we know how the exposure came and so the exposure to the symptomatic or to the positive case was outside of the school and so the onset of symptoms was later. So there's like this big lag time in between. And we also have to do, uh, encourage families to please if your child is unvaccinated or someone is unvaccinated that you keep them home if they've been exposed.
And to get tested, right? I mean, I feel like that's the other part, like how to really encourage rapid testing as soon as those symptoms actually do present themselves.
Absolutely.
Cause that is a community safety issue.
Yes. And there's a communication that'll be going out soon that outlines some of those things that we can do as a community to keep our schools and our students and staff safe.
Great, thank you.
That was gonna be my next, if, am I remembering last year wrong and that if you were exposed, you did not come to school?
Absolutely.
Or go anywhere?
Absolutely.
And so is that not?
That's the same.
That's the same, okay.
That's the same. I think that some of the things that are, that are different, that feel different are if you're fully vaccinated, you do get to come to school. If you've been exposed and you're fully vaccinated, you can come to school.
Right.
But just those things feel.
If you're symptom-free.
If you're symptom-free.
So it's likely the breakthrough cases that are causing this, this gap, right? Cause it's someone that's vaccinated.
Yeah, our vaccine coverage rate isn't quite high enough for that. I mean, we, what are we at? About, about a third unvaccinated among our, among our sort of secondary grade?
About right, yeah.
So, I mean, we have enough unvaccinated that we're still gonna see that population potentially having cases and the breakthroughs aren't gonna be necessarily driving it.
The majority of our cases have not been breakthrough cases.
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty consistent, that breakthrough transmission and breakthrough cases happen, but they're, they're still a minority. And of course, for severe cases, it's the substantial minority, but.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just comment as a parent that, that the, the notification is robust. You, you get a lot of emails, um, with the secondary, a child in secondary who has multiple classes, you get one for each, each class in which the, the exposure occurred and so I think we got, we, we got a handful of emails today.
That is the hard part.
But we didn't get the phone call.
Right.
That's always really positive. You're reminding.
Yeah, reminding people that you're gonna get letter after letter after letter after letter again and again and again and again. And I don't wanna say it doesn't count, but until you get the phone call, there hasn't been a close contact exposure. Um, so that's, for most people, that's, that's the biggest clarification I would hope that they would, they would have.
And, and outside that notification system, which I appreciate, there, there's been a lot of things in the launch of this year that have felt almost like normal and that's been, been awesome to be a part of, so it's, it's been fun to see, but of course guarded. Any other final comments or questions on back to school? All right, we'll move, move forward then.
Stay there, Dr. Clarkson, and come on back, Mr. Holgy. So now we are gonna talk about community feedback on ESER, um, and the ESER three funding. So we did some survey and some work and so we'll turn it over to our team's team members.
All right, well, I'm back again along with my colleague, Mr. Holgy. And we're here just to summarize, like we said, we've come back and talk about the community input on how, um, the, the recommendations on how SR three funding should be utilized to support students based on the impact of COVID. So our primary way of reaching our community, our parents and guardians, staff and our secondary students was through a very simple survey. To be honest, we had hoped that we would get more information from committees, but it was a really rushed start to the school year and so very few of our committees actually had the opportunity to meet. But there was communication with, um, on our, on our website for this survey that started in, I wanna say mid-August. Um, staff received the survey as they came back to school, received an email and it was communicated and talked about at all of our school, um, staff meetings and asked staff to, um, complete it. And then our middle school and high school students had an AirPod class that talked about what the SR survey funds were and they also, um, were given the survey during AirPod time. During open houses, um, we did have paper copies of the survey available in Spanish, Somali and English. They also had QR codes where student or families could complete the survey. So we did, we worked hard to make people aware and, um, asked for them to please complete the surveys. Quickly, the survey design, like I said, it was very simple. The first questions were demographic questions. The second survey question, uh, the second page was just the survey questions. It was rank order, so one being their highest priority to ten being their lowest priority. You had to fully rank one through ten, you had to mark each one of them. And some of the information, uh, well, we also had a write-in section. You could complete the first page of the survey and not rank all of them, all of the one through ten, so you'll see numbers look a little different for those that actually started the survey to those that had the number that were actually completed. So here is who actually participated in the survey. We had nine, um, 1,963 individuals that opened the survey. Uh, and that started it and those were counted. Those that completed page one, the demographics, was 1,898 individuals. You'll see that we broke out who actually by parent and guardian, we had 780 parents or guardians completed, 726 students and 364 staff members, 28 were other. The breakout for, um, middle school and high school was 431 high schoolers and 288 middle schoolers. And the demographics are below by race, ethnicity. The two largest, uh, groups that identified are those that identify as white and those that identify as Hispanic or Latino.
So I wanna just pause in for one second and say, in the first two weeks of school, we had eight, 1,900 people respond to the survey. I was on a state call last week for training around this and they were, a lot of people were asking, well, what do I do if we don't get feedback? What if we don't get feedback? I think we did a great job of getting that out. Um, you'll see parents, staff members, students, um, all represented in this area. So while, as Dr. Clarkson was saying, it's not perfect, we got a lot of feedback for something that isn't an immediate connection for an individual necessarily. Uh, the next series of slides, we're gonna take a look at, um, it's a graphic representation of those 10 priorities that were identified, um, just to kinda see where things landed. Um, we did notice, especially with the students, there was some sequential trending where the first question had one, a rank of one, the second question had a rank of two in front of going that way, um, but we didn't see that necessarily across all the spectrums. So this first one is looking at physical and mental health. Um, this came across very strong, um, and just, I'm gonna step back one second. So the priorities that were identified came from state priorities for funding. Um, it was district priorities that were aligned with the grant according to the state priority guidelines, as well as a look at our strategic plan and some of the other places that we gathered some feedback in those areas. At the end, we will take a look at, um, combining some of the rankings and what this means and some analysis that way. And then one thing as we look at these, just to point out, is the scale on each one of these slides is a little bit different. So you do, you do need to look a little bit at the number that's on there in addition to where that fall within the rankings, so.
Always look at the numbers.
Always look at the numbers, always look at the numbers. So this first one was the physical and mental health components and services and programs associated with that. Um, you can see that this had a very large ranking of that top priority. Um, and then we'll see how that combined when we start looking at the first top three priorities later on. So that was strong in general, um, especially at that number one ranking. If we move on to the second one, this also was one that came out strong across the board, um, with 350 respondents identifying this with a priority level two. This is focused on students' social, social and emotional needs.
This next one was, um, improved communication and support for our multilingual learners and their families. You'll see that, um, this was the, the highest ranking was in the mid-range. I'd also like to point out that those that complete, this is kind of a special, I call it special interest group, so this doesn't impact all of our, um, community members that may have answered this question. So I want us to also notice that it was mid-range, so it could be viewed as important for those that, um, identify as needing to support. This next one was, um, expanded access to tutoring and this was solidly ranked in the mid-range across, uh, the, the respondents.
In the next category, rebuilding connections between home and school, again, you can see this one has lower rankings at the one and two and lower rankings at the 10. But again, another one that has a lot of strong, um, middle spread, um, with nearly 200, um, responses at three, four, five, six, seven and eight, um, really in that middle range area. And then when we look at smaller class sizes, this was really interesting because we saw allotted one and a lot of at the 10. What we found here is, um, at the 10, it was much more our students that were responding that it wasn't as important for them. The ones it was our parents and our staff members that were connected in with it. As I said, you know, what kid doesn't wanna have more kids in their class so they have more friends and more connections? Um, it doesn't mean that it's a priority or less of a priority, but it's just an interesting piece. And also, um, the students who are responding here, just to remind everybody, are middle school and high school kids, so it's not at that elementary level necessarily in that same way.
Um, access to technology at home. This was pretty standard across the board, um, with the two lowest ranked as nine and 10. So, you know, it's, it's an area that, um, is clearly stating that we just need to make sure that we have technology available for our students. And this next one, culturally diverse curriculum and instruction, um, was not one of the highest ranked, but you will see later on that, um, our, there's a group of our student or our families, a group that identified as, um, black that about 25% ranked this as their highest priority.
Uh, moving on to the next area, opportunities outside of the school day. Um, you'll see that this also has a large, um, ranking towards the bottom of the list, um, which was really interesting. You'll see that in some of the comments, there are some comments that are addressing activities that might be taking place outside of the school day. And just a reminder for the board, we have about 20% of our set aside for SR three that needs to be used to target lost instructional time. Um, and what the state has really kind of guided is that that really means after-school, summer school, summer programming, extended day or extended year programming as the primary focus. There are some opportunities to look at how we do that within the day, but we have to make sure that we're addressing the factor of time if we're doing it. So even though this is a lower priority from the state requirements, we will be building in some areas around that lost instructional time that takes place outside of the traditional school day. And then finally, um, expanded transportation services. This, um, pretty much came across the board with 512 individuals saying this is a number 10 priority. Um, I think some of this, uh, draws to the fact that we, um, re-initiated our hazardous walk zones and so we really shrunk down our walk zone boundaries and increased our transportation boundaries. So other than programming that is perhaps connected with some of our after-school programming and transportation services, this was identified as a lower priority in that area. Moving on, one of the things, as you look at these numbers or look at the spreads, there's just so much variation. We looked at, if we rank the top, if we combine the, um, votes or, you know, I hate using the word votes, but if we identified those who had identified, um, a one, two or three ranking with those priorities, um, that's the high, um, ranking or the high priority. A four, five, six, seven is the medium priority, um, areas and then the low priority, low priorities are the nine and 10. So, um, this is connecting in here with the high priority votes. You can see that of the high priority votes, um, physical and mental health and social, emotional support are clearly up at the top with those number of people interested in those areas. Um, and then smaller class sizes with 605, uh, 670 identifying. And then smaller class sizes with 670 identifying those in a 1, 2, 3 area. We talked a little bit about that disparate perspective on where that is, so that's another consideration that we move into. When we look at the medium priority votes, you see those with the rebuilding homeschool connections, communications with multilingual learners, families, access to tutoring, culturally diverse curriculum and instruction, and access to technology at home being in that mid-range, and then the lower priorities being the outside of school, opportunities outside of school hours, and expanded transportation services. So those are kind of where we pile into those areas. And then, as Mary Ann indicated, we also had an open-ended question for what are we missing? What other priorities do you think should be considered? This highlights that information. You can see some of them align with those areas already. For example, music and arts and athletics might be lining up with opportunities outside of the school day. We have additional intervention staff connects a little bit with the tutoring component of it, whether it's after-school tutoring, but additional supports to instruct in those areas. And then emotional support for staff, different connections that way that are expanding beyond what was listed specifically. One of the things that we found is most of these things are things that we're already doing, so it wasn't a brand-new idea in any one of the areas, but it just is an opportunity for individuals to identify things that are focused on their interests.
Okay, the next two slides really are looking at, focuses on the differences, different responses based on how you identify. So this first one looks at the differences between roles, so the differences between students, parents, and guardians, and staff. And I think the one thing that just stands out here is clearly the smaller class size. It was a higher priority for our parents and staff, and we kind of smile at the students' ranking because when they were doing that 1, 2, 3, 4, this was the only one that they did not do in the number order. So our secondary students are really giving us some information that smaller class sizes does not necessarily, is not one of their priorities. Next slide. Okay, this next slide looks at the differences based on how the individual identified as racial or ethnic group. And the two things that I'd like to point out here is, first of all, 25% of our individuals that completed the survey that identify as black identified culturally diverse curriculum and instruction as their number one priority. So that's something to pay attention to. There were about 15% that of the two or more races that talked, that rated rebuilding connection between home and school as one of their top three priorities. And then the largest group of respondents, which were our white families, our white respondents really were reflected in the overall rankings of the priorities.
Next, we also looked at it by school to see if there are any variances between the different schools and what their interests were. We saw very consistent approaches in most of our buildings with what you probably have been picking up along the way. Centennial, there was really a tie between physical and mental health and the social emotional supports with smaller class sizes being a number two priority. With RDLS, smaller class sizes was the number one priority with a tie between physical and mental health and social emotional supports being second. STEM shared in hills and RMS all had the same three rankings of smaller class sizes being number one, physical and mental health being number two, and social emotional supports being number three. And at the high school, we had the smaller class sizes being one. And here we see the introduction of the access to technology at home, which as families and students are more independent with technology access or needing those areas, that showed up at the high school a little bit more than the other buildings, and then the physical and mental health connected in with that. Next round, I'm going to move with some general conclusions as far as the summary of this information. There's general agreement that physical and mental health along with social emotional needs should be prioritized. So those showed up 1 and 2 pretty much across all the spectrums. Similarly, smaller class sizes came out strong, but as we talked about, there is that difference between what parents and staff members were saying versus what students were saying. We also saw that there was a little, there was less priority for the class sizes with our black and Latinx respondents in the survey, not as focused on that as the larger population. Most respondents did not highly prioritize programming outside of the school day, but we saw that there was some passion around that with the comments that individuals were putting in. Expanding transportation was not generally prioritized, and the greatest number of write-in comments concerned more options for meals, additional funding for athletics and music arts programming, and additional staffing for academic interventions. So our next steps, and what we think this means and where we are moving forward to is, our application and our budget are due by October 1. So we have a very quick timeline to get these things systematized into that application. The good news is, as we look at program priorities, it really, we believe it aligns up with what we have been doing as an organization, what our strategic plan has been saying. All of our investments over the last few years with class sizes, with social emotional supports, with physical and mental health, in addition to the academic supports and interventions, continue in that same area. So strong alignment, continue with those areas. Other areas with those smaller interest groups or individuals who may not have been as vocal in responding to the survey also need to be addressed. We saw those in those middle range areas of looking at our curriculum, looking at additional supports for families with multilingual learners and things like that, need to also continue to be a priority in our work. While outside of the traditional school day was not a priority in this area, we do know that we need to address it from that lost instructional time, and so we will be building in some activities around that. And part of that will be looking at our partners with Beacons and looking at some other partnerships outside of our school community, which is also a big focus for this grant application according to the state. And then, one of the things we heard at fiscal planning last spring and again this fall is balancing that expansion of programming with sustainability, so we don't add something for a year and then take it away in a year, but then look at what are those value-added programs? And so how do we respond immediately where we need to have that acute response, but then also make sure that we're planning that moving forward as well? So we will be working actively on that. Mary and I have an appointment set up tomorrow afternoon to start working on that application and fine-tuning that along with the grant. If there are any questions or comments, that would also be helpful for us at this time.
All right. Well, thank you. That was thorough, for sure. There's a lot of content. I'll start with the left side of the room, if that's all right. We'll start with Crystal.
I had a feeling. Given how much, I have talked about this in the past, so I do have a number of things, unsurprisingly. One thing, it would be helpful if you can share with us the student results specifically. I would like to see them disaggregated from the totals. And a question related to that that you might know, you might not know off the top of your head, are the student racial demographics of who took the survey as unbalanced as the overall demographics? The student results are more reflective of our actual student population? So that makes me want to see it even more, because I think you said in the presentation that, you know, our, our white folks are well-reflective. I would say they are overrepresented. And so the desire to see what our students who are more reflective says, it feels really strong for me. And I think, connected to that, I would say, as you're having these conversations and really putting these plans together, how to use the lens of our equity policy when looking at this, and when looking at this data and making sure that it isn't kept in context, and just thinking about what that equity policy would call us to do. And then I think the last two things I was going to say, one is that it, there was a big survey that was just released from the University of Minnesota. Steve might know the name of it off the top of his head, because I do not, the one that Katie Pikel did. Do you remember what it's called? Okay. It was released recently, and it was students, families, and staff who were surveyed last fall, and then again this spring, just about what they were experiencing, what they were wanting from school. And I think, again, there were some really interesting differences between what students were saying and what the adults in the system were saying. And so for there, in those results, the number one concern for students was actually around academics, and it was around being academically behind and being concerned about that. And so I think that's something that I'm interested to hear more about from the perspective of our kids. And then I would say, final comment, is just how we're going to follow up on this with our community and really sort of close that circle of what we ended up putting in the plan. And I know our Director of Communications, Jennifer Valley, is watching our meeting and so suspect that this is already in her mind. But, so one example is, you know, long-term class size reduction is not something we can do with this funding. And so I worry that we set people up to think that that is a viable long-term strategy that we can use with these dollars when actually we cannot. And so just how we talk about that and how we share with people, the decisions that we end up making as a district feel really important to me. That's it.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
So you brought up a lot of the things I was thinking, but thank you for getting this out in the forefront for us to talk about it. I know you mentioned it multiple times, so I appreciate that. My interest also is in disaggregation of some of the data, so if you, so elementary or primary family, primary school parents versus secondary parents and secondary students, right? You're going to have different experiences, and those kids will have different needs. So I think it's important to look at what the elementary school, if you are an elementary school parent, what their, what their priorities were versus what secondary student families' priorities are, because I think they're going to be very different. I think one thing that obvious, is obvious through all of this is that social, emotional, and mental health needs are at the top of priority. And I think it's really important to look at that across the board for all of our students and to make it a priority. And I don't think that the repercussions of these past couple of years are just going to go away. So even though we only have this money for now, I think it's really important to look at what we can do long-term for our students in that and make it a priority for all of our kids going forward. And I think the equity lens is important, but I also think it's really important to recognize that, boy, this is really hurting, has really hurt all of our kids. And I think it's important to remember that, too. And then I think it was the same thing I was going to bring up about class sizes, and yeah, it would be great to decrease our class sizes, but it's, it's not sustainable without additional money coming in. And you guys addressed that already, that you've already talked about it, so I think that is an important thing. And I know, so the loss of instructional time, and I'm also interested in the disaggregation when you talk about tutoring for kids and that kind of thing, because I would expect that that's where you'd see a lot more in the secondary, and even from the kids, like if they are feeling that they are behind, that they may be the ones asking for that, or secondary parents who aren't able to help their kids that are struggling at that secondary level. And otherwise, I think it was very interesting, and I'm glad we managed to get this out in two weeks and get this much information together, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mieschek?
First, I just want to thank you for the time and attention to this. I haven't seen this kind of data from any other districts in terms of how they're engaging their community around Essar, so I'm very impressed by that, and especially with the numbers. I also was grateful for the breakdown of the demographics. I think in surveys, one downfall can be sort of a majority rules mentality, and that can be contradictory to equity, so I did appreciate how you broke that down. Some of the things you highlighted from racial and ethnic groups, I didn't necessarily see in the program priorities on the next step slide, so I would just echo what Crystal said in keeping that equity policy in mind as we complete the application. And then, kind of a technical question, my assumption is it has to do with tier, tier levels of intervention, but how would you differentiate between mental health and social emotional support, between those two questions?
The way we were looking at it is the social, emotional is more the curriculum, the embedded practices that are happening in school, and the actual health and mental health are the actual services, so school linked to mental health services. Now, I'm not sure, you know, I speak to that, so to your point, it might not have been clear in the survey to those that were completing it.
Sure. It makes sense to my brain that social, emotional is kind of like the tier one instructions.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think that's everything. Thank you so much.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
Just on those priorities. What we were trying to communicate is, while we saw the strength of physical, mental health, social, emotional needs, class sizes, putting that equity lens on and looking at where some of those other voices were showing up in that second bullet around other areas need to also be addressed in those next step formulas is what our intention was, is trying to communicate that.
Oh, thank you for clarifying. I think I overlooked that.
We weren't disregarding the rest of them. We were just saying that while these were the strongest, these are other things we also need to make sure we're including in our plan.
Thank you.
Cool. So I really appreciate the comment on the special interest questions, and, you know, because that was the thing that stood out to me is the distinction between questions that really have that general affect-everybody scope and those that are really going to be much more targeted in scope. And so have we, I mean, I mean, I think you kind of alluded to this, that to some extent, this survey could be sort of a scoping exercise as we think about doing a whole variety of different things, but it's kind of like, how big do you go with your access to tutoring or with your communication to multiple language families? Because I would, for the most part, I felt like there was, that the feedback we were getting was telling us that a lot of this is important. And obviously, we sometimes can't do everything, and we've got to set priorities, but if it's possible to sort of right-size our efforts and, you know, maybe do several intensely-directed but smaller efforts that are directed where they're particularly needed, then that feels like a good use of this sort of feedback. So that's kind of what I had, but I would agree with the overall assessment on, I mean, it felt, it felt pretty clear on what your top sort of broad priorities are, which would be the, you know, social, emotional side and the physical and mental side. So that seemed like something that would be covering across the entire, across the entire district, so makes sense to me.
Ms. Cole?
You ready?
We're ready.
All right. So thank you, like Allegra said, I don't know anybody else who's doing this, and I know that you were all very intentional in sharing the survey with the community and trying to get, that said, we know and we have said before that surveys are not culturally relevant ways of getting information. They're a fast test, as from the researcher point of view, you get a lot of information that you can dissect and, you know, work with and get a lot of information. So I'm curious to know, this is one of the things I, I have a lot of theories in my mind, so one thing, is there a way that, with the understanding that we have 30% of our families in the district are white race, but 47% of them said their responses? We know that 42% of our students are Latinos. We only have about half of that, a little bit over half who responded, so, and then we only have 7% of participants are black of, nah, Hispanic origin, but we know that 30% of the students are, you know, black. So I'm curious to know, is if, do you think it's fair to take these numbers as a, 47% of the 30% of white, and then kind of, kind of like doing like a curve, and this is more like a math question to you think, but does that make sense? I've seen, are we taking, if we think of representation, like can we take this representation and to say like about overall groups? Because what's, what I see here, like I'm not surprised to see that black and Latino families don't see class sizes as a priority, because in our community, this is more about a life and death situation, and maybe not life and death in that sense, but it is to us, because this is what we're fighting against and our kids are thinking about the future. So I think that's why it's so important that we think about, and like to, in my head, culturally relevant instruction, and also having the resources to do it, is, is an investment into the inequity that we have in discipline disparities in our district, not only by race, but also by special needs, you know, exceptionalities here. So when I think of Essar funding and this thing that we have where we don't, we know we don't only have this for a couple of years, so class sizes definitely, what are we going to do, hire a lot of teachers and then fire them? We can do that. However, there's a lot of priorities that we have had that we haven't had money to do before, because, you know, we are a fiscally responsive district and we are doing a lot of great things. So I think this is a great opportunity to really So I think this is a, a great opportunity to really think about, what are these great things that I believe for culturally relevant instruction that are also going to support social, emotional health and are going to be longstanding? Because if I say district, I know that when I joined the board, I know that Steve was on a mission along with you to really improve the way we deliver curriculum here and the, and the work was amazing. We see in the, the results we have seen for years. So like an investment that keeps on giving going forward, because we have changed the culture of how we teach and how we plan lessons and how we see students, which is very in line with what we do already, because I, I do know there's an interest from this district to, to do that. But I just don't want to miss out on the opportunity of something that could be so great and be longstanding because of responses didn't, you know what I mean? Like the, the responses are not showing based on the percentages. So that's a lot in my head. I'm speaking very fast, sorry. I do that and speak a lot, too. But thank you. You've been really great eye contact and listeners and I'm very grateful for this.
I do want to acknowledge, though, what you're saying, and I think it's the same thing that Crystal and the others have said, is not taking the overall data as just the overall data. We need to look at our groups, our, our respondents that identify as black, as Latinx, as two or more races and what are they saying? We also, when we write the grant, can write it broad enough where we have some flexibility. I mean, they, they, how social, emotional learning and culturally responsive teaching, to your point, they're very much aligned. And so that's work that we've already committed to do, but how do we, is there something else that we're hearing from our communities and maybe need to go back and speak with our students to get a little bit more clarity on what that might look like and how that might show up? So.
I just want to comment, Paula asked a question that yes, you can reweight the responses if you feel as though the cells, for example, for, you know, the whites were overwhelming, were overrepresented within the sample, you could reweight them and present them representing, you know, 30% that they actually are within the district, for example. And you could reweight the replies for the Hispanic Latinos to, to be 40% or, you know, to be closer to the actual number, et cetera. And you could, if you believe these responses are valid as, as survey responses within the categories, yes, you could take them and the distribution of their responses and then just reweight them to amplify some and to dampen others.
I so love the expertise that comes out in board meetings.
Every now and then I'm useful.
I know you know the answer to that.
Do you think we have enough? Well, now we're getting too technical. Whether we have enough, enough, enough N in those cells to do that?
Is N big enough? Um, yeah, exactly. That's a, how much time do we have?
Right. I could see that with the white and the Hispanic cells. I'm a little concerned about some of the others, but at any rate, nevertheless, that's way too in the weeds.
But, but.
Let's not go.
So what I'll say is as administration, what we hear is pull out the students, do more work in the demographic data and examine to make sure what it actually says as we continue moving ourselves forward. So we're sure that our responses are aligned to our equity and to the vision that we have as district. I hear that we did a very good job in getting a wide range of voice, and so that is something we can be proud of, and we want to make sure that how we interpret it really aligns to our value system. And so Cassandra already sent a doc with some of those notes, and one of the joyful things of doing such a wonderful job that the outreach team did and the administrative team did and our teams did is now we get to do some more. And so we will continue on with our survey and we'll continue on to look at, are there other ways to look at this that, that represent our values really, really well and make sure we're actually hearing all of the voices we want to hear.
Right.
And I want to say, I'm not saying that, I want to value everybody's responses and I don't want to say that I don't value, you know, anyone who takes the survey is doing a great service in sharing the information. I just want to make sure that as we do with everything where there's a survey related, this is a data point or plenty of them, but not the whole of it. So that, what you've said about thinking what, what's going on with the students, what, what do we see in buildings every day, like that's also important and so thank you.
Right. How we honor and value and respond to the, the responses we got and do things that we can do that, that are sustainable and that, you know, hopefully we learn something, you know, different than what we would have imagined on our own for, for direction here. That would be real value, I think. So, so thank you.
And similar to, as you have suggested, one of the ways to value that is then we report back what we are doing based on the voice that we heard. And you can see some of that in our Reimagine Richfield work in the video that just came up.
And I think to the point that this is one data point, you know, both in that data collection. So looking at this in addition to what we've been doing with our student engagement committees and the student work, is the voice that's come out through a lot of those areas. So for us, as we looked at this, this is one data point. It's a more, most immediate response data point. Certainly has some limitations because it was a one month at the beginning of the school year, get a survey out. We have to turn this around by October 1st, but we haven't looked at it exclusively and this is the only voice that we're listening to as part of that process. And I do want to just shout out to Cassandra who put together a lot of this information. So she's like over there saying, okay, here's the student stop. And she, she was responding to that and helping us. And so I just want to give that shout out to the work that she did as part of this process, too. So.
Thanks to all three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody else who did a lot.
Awesome. All right.
All right. So one more in the superintendent reports. So to our board candidates, we're at 8:30 and we're only two items in. It's not always like this.
This is not typical.
Because I didn't come last time, I noticed we ended like a day.
The last meeting was, was very quick.
Don't, don't tap it on yourself, Paula.
For related.
This one, not so much, and that's okay.
Paula, I was still here. Come on.
That's true.
All right. So the superintendent goals.
All right. Superintendent goals, which is really the evaluation process as you think about the roles of a board member, as you are in governance, guiding our policies, as you are working on the vision, you are supervising one employee of the district, that is me. And so one of the things that I do as part of that transparent evaluation is present goals. This is a first draft. This is the second step in the process. The first step was my evaluation back in July, where we had conversation about goals and, and some of the areas to work in, reviewed our strategic plan and began work on the overall evaluative process. Just as a reminder, from the last year process, which rolls forward to this year, and this aligns to QCOM, student achievement is 30% of the overall evaluation, specific data based on the gains and achievement of our students. Process goals, which is my work, leading our strategic plan and specific activities to improve our district. And then also the other 30% is my individual performance, board evaluation of me, how I'm doing. There's a survey that goes into that process and a bunch of other components. For a student achievement perspective, we have now gotten creative and advanced some of our work based on, on COVID and some of the good learning. So we had to move off of standardized testing in a very significant way and move to achievement growth. And so we're looking to finalize achievement growth measures and common affirmative assessments in reading and in math and other curricular areas that occur within our elementary schools. And each of our elementaries are now documenting our students, their student achievement and growth. And so we're looking at that as one measure and then creating that process at the secondary level to make sure that that works. And so that we are matching some of the work at elementary with what we'll be doing in our secondary. So you'll see a sample of what that might look like. And what we're doing is making sure that the board is aligned to this vision. And then we'll get some of that data up and, and we will pop that together for draft two. Typical measure that we have, graduation rate growth. And so continuing on with our graduation rate growth, often I would have a goal in regard to gap closure, but as you know, and as we have been recognized for, we actually have no outcome gap in graduation rate by racial demographics of our children. We are one of the few districts, if not the only, that has no predictability by race for graduation in the state of Minnesota. Something we can be very proud of and something that we will work very hard to continue on. However, we do have other areas where we have significant gaps in our outcomes. 2021 achievement on the eighth grade MCA, and these are some of the touch points of, of where students find success in the bigger picture. We have a gap, 67% of the students participating in the grade eight MCA were students of color, but only 40% of them who scored proficient were BIPOC students. And then on the third grade MCA reading, another signpost that the state has asked us to look for in our world's best workforce, 72% of the students participating were BIPOC, but only 52% scoring proficient were BIPOC. So just trying to figure out ways to look at our gap. One of the things that we have as a baseline challenge from last year is only about two-thirds of our students actually took the MCAs last year. And so really trying to figure out, how do we try to match, match our outcomes to, to make sure we're having gap closure? And so our biggest feedback from board, which you can give me either in this meeting over the next couple of weeks, is are we on the right track in terms of some of those measures that we're looking at for my evaluation? Process goals are those things that I'm doing overall to lead our district, aligned to our strategic plan and the challenges that we have. So obviously, as we know, we are going through the ongoing pandemic and that is a lot of work for our district to effectively lead our way through. Draft create, communicate our vision cards. We launched those out and now we really have to use those as that transparent tool to talk about a wide range of measures, to, to analyze how our performance is. Overseeing substantial completion of our construction project on time and within overall budget. We are in the last year, last significant year of our overall construction project. A very exciting component to have. Completing and launching the equity guidelines to accompany our equity policy. And so we are working on, I believe, around five specific guidelines and some, some pretty significant in-depth work beyond just the policy itself, but really talking about what are the actions that are going to accompany that. And then one of our large strategic plan pieces of work that's happening in all of our schools across the district is a transition to standards-based grading. And standards-based grading isn't just grading, it's also transforming the way we assess and then transforming the way we teach based on how our students are doing. So so far, what we have done, pandemic-wise, we worked through the summer again, how to create safe in-person learning plans, expanded our blended learning at RSEP and online learning through our partner districts, and have continued on with new COVID protocols to start our school year. In regard to our vision cards, on July 7th, we published our draft vision cards with our baseline data, and we will be creating a schedule to gather that updated data and present those to our board and also our community. And Jennifer Valley Communications, who is listening online, will also help us with, how do we then communicate that out to our community so we can effectively share, what are those measures and how are we doing across a variety of areas? Looking at that substantial completion component of our work, constructions completed, Centennial IDLS, STEM and RHS, 90 to 95% at Sheridan, RMS and Central, and we are currently on time in the bigger picture and with an overall budget within that bigger picture. And again, as a reminder, not every step of the piece is within budget and not every step is on time, but the bigger picture of our project is, is within that window and remains that way. Continuing with our equity policy, and so we did, as you remember, approve that back in April 19th. Part one of equity guidelines is drafted, currently is about to go in front of safe and supportive schools. It's going to leadership team members and staff, and we'll continue to work that way until we have something to share out with the board, and then we'll continue on. And again, we estimate approximately five guidelines will come with this policy, approximately, as we continue to see what are all the areas for us to focus on. And then we have worked on the concept of standards-based grading. We introduced that to all of our teachers. It was in workshop weekend and some of our plans. And so everybody has heard this. We worked that out with our Initiative MOA Committee, which is our partnership with Education Richfield. And just making sure that we figure out what is an appropriate timeline for this. This is not a one-year project. This is something that we'll be doing and, and hearing about over the next several years. Last year, we began and did the setup for that, launching a digital grade book at elementary, which allows that goal for student achievement to show, what is the growth of our formative assessments and our summative assessments at elementary? And then creating professional development and making sure our teachers are really set up to be successful as we move ourselves forward in, in some of this work. Then obviously, moving on to my overall performance, and just as a reminder, we do that staff and parent survey, often happening in February. You all then reach out to my direct reports, the principals and the cabinet team members for feedback. Also, then you provide feedback to that evaluation, in which case we culminate with a closed session and evaluative process. And so with that, again, a lot of information. We can take feedback or input on ideas you might have now or over the next couple of weeks, because what we'll do is we'll refine this and we'll try to solidify my goals and measures and then continue on with our, our leadership team and work on, on everybody's goals across the district.
All right. Well, thank you. So just as a reminder, for those watching at home or with us in the boardroom, this, this document represents the superintendent's goals for the year. It's how, what we use to measure his performance. Of course, missing from this is the obvious. We expect you to superintend the district, which is lead us in general. But there, there are specific tasks we ask on an annual basis. And so this, this document is somewhat of a living document. We update it. Sometimes the goals shift, right? Like when COVID happened, we kind of had to throw the old one out because we, well, we just weren't able to do normal things for a while. So anyway, that, with that as a preamble, I do want to make sure that the board knows that if there's, there are items they wish to see represented within here to, to reach out to me and let me know so I can work with the superintendent to include them within there. So with that, we'll start on the left again.
Okay. I just.
You're afraid of starting with me now?
We may never get to the, all the way to the right. I don't know. Of course, we will.
No, I just, I appreciate this first draft, the, the timing of it. It feels nice to be back in our regular cycle, so thank you for all of that. I think everything looks really good as a start. The, the one thing that surprised me was that I didn't see the strategic plan mentioned anywhere, and I think that that's probably implied in vision cards, but that's the one thing that I wondered about making more explicit in some way, shape or form related to your goals.
And I can see Ms. Quam writing that down, and so in draft two, it will absolutely be spelled out.
Thank you.
I think it looks great. So thank you for all the effort in mapping everything out and I am sure you'll listen to it.
Ms. Cole?
This took a really great start and I'm very excited to see focus on growth. You know, I believe growth tells us more than the MCA. As a former teacher, I know what, how kids feel about the MCA, so it's kind of like, yeah, that's another story. But it's a great, great start and I'm excited to see what we kind of, the end for now.
For now. That's excellent. Thank you. It's, it's very important that the vice chair is comfortable with this, this tool since, since you'll be very important in, in operating this, I'm sure.
So to me, again, I, I want to acknowledge it's a, it's a really, really nice beginning. To me, as we talk about successfully continuing to lead the district through the pandemic, my feeling about the prior academic year was that, obviously, that year that we've just experienced, everything, everything got derailed. You know, the, the pandemic and the, the substantial complete disruption of our, of our ability to deliver instruction the way we were used to, really threw kind of everything out the window. What I, and I, and I think that I feel very, also very grateful that we sort of went through that disruption with the degree of success that we did. What's been really important to me moving forward then, as we start to resume with some semblance of more normal, is that we regain the momentum that we, that I feel like we had built prior to, to the pandemic hitting us. So what I'm thinking about is I'm thinking about some of the items that had been substantial focus areas of 1718 or 1819. And I'm thinking about the, our, our focus area on radical hospitality. And I'm, and I can't recall if that was ever in a goal, but that was, I think, an important focus area, one that I want us to not lose sight of. And then the second would be work that we've done to focus in on athletics and activities and to continue to drive more participation, more engagement and, and, you know, more success in athletics and activities. We've had some transitions there in terms of, you know, who we've got personnel-wise leading. And I would like us to sort of continue to see, you know, progress in that area. So again, I don't know if that was ever formally part of goals. I know, Steve, that you had taken a relatively direct approach there a few years back and, and I, I think I appreciated that we were seeing some, some really good outcomes from your direct involvement there. And I guess I'm encouraging us to keep that on the radar.
We'll review that and look for a golden line source strategic plan within that area.
Yep. Thank you. Ms. Mecheff?
I think these look very strong and I just want to give personal thanks for taking some time to walk me through the vision cards and your process for that. I just found it really fascinating and really liked seeing that big picture. So thank you for that as well.
Well, that will conclude the superintendent update. Thank you. And that will bring us to, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is the, the basket of relatively. This is the basket of relatively ordinary and mundane and routine business items that we consent to pass in bulk with no discussion. So with that said, does anyone have anything they'd like to remove for discussion before we move the item? I don't hear any, so we could entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Smieszek. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is passed. All right. Now we'll move to old business, and the first item is Policy 704, Annual Audit.
All right, we're picking up speed now. All right, read two of Policy 704 Annual Audit. Just as a reminder, we have three reads. The first is to refamiliarize ourselves, second is the revised, and then third is the passage, ideally. So this is the annual audit. Just again, minor changes have gone through. Mr. Holgy has worked with the FPAC group and a later policy, the Insurance Advisory Group, to make sure that we are getting those voices in. And so all you'll see is changes to style specifically in this area. And so I'm just presenting you redlined copy for your review.
All right. Well, thank you. Right, we discussed last time that the audit is, seems to be a fairly straightforward copy from the MSBA model policy and is driven by statute and expectations for government entities to be audited. So I appreciate the cleanup in style. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one? All right, it is a second read. If you have any, please share them with the superintendent before the next time, otherwise we'll bring it back for a third read and passage at the next meeting. Super. Policy 705, Insurance.
Second read also. Again, another short policy that just very much aligns to MSBA. This is more an insurance advisory that is reviewed by the Insurance Advisory Committee. And so you'll see that running past us again for a quick review, and we'll again be back, be back for recommended passage in two weeks.
All right. We had a spirited discussion last time about who would actually-
I want to make sure I understand what I just heard. You said insurance advisory has yet to weigh in? Is that what I just heard?
This hasn't gone through any committees.
Hasn't gone through any committees.
No, this is, but it is more insurance advisory than FPAC, correct?
The other way around was my, my thinking last time. The Insurance Advisory Committee, in my experience, deals primarily with the insurance that we offer to employees, has benefits, and the FPAC is our financial oversight committee. And I think the risk management that property casualty insurance would bring, would probably fall under theirs, under most corporate structures.
So what all of this is really doing is indicating that the board is going to be working with consultants or agents of record to secure the insurances associated with the district. The, in July every year, the board appoints who those agents of record are for both the benefits as well as the property casualty liability. So insurance, the specific insurance categories haven't been addressed in FPAC previously because it's more about financial planning versus the risk mitigations, really more of a specialist partnership with our insurance consulting brokers and insurance.
Correct.
So it hasn't had a committee structure to view it specifically. If the board wanted to put something in saying that the administration, it's recommended that the administration work with committees for as appropriate or seek consult, that could be added, but all this is really doing is appointing, saying that we're working with insurance agents of record.
All right. And I think if we were to address that, the, the, if we were to include language like that within this, I really do think it would be FPAC that would be considering our, our schedule of insurance and looking at that, just doing, just so they could understand the, that we have standard risk manager. I mean, we, we talk about risk and things that could go poorly for us on FPAC, right? Like, do we have, that's why we have-
That's why we have a reserve.
Reserve fund and things like that, right? And so they, I think, would be the ones who should consider the various coverages we have to keep us from getting sued or to replace buildings and, and other things that, that suffer damage, you know, whether it's property or liability, some sort of claim there. So that would be something we could consider. If you want, I could work with Mr. Holgy to figure out if it's appropriate to include in policy, or we could just change how those committees operate and, and put it within there that they have an expectation to review as necessary. I don't know which is more appropriate. I tend to like policies that are general.
Yeah.
So I'll just speak to a couple of challenges. So property casualty liability generally comes up in September and October. So our fiscal planning advisory begins first weekend in September, so much of the work is done over the summer around securing our insurances.
Microphone.
Oh. Sorry. Nope, that's me. Sorry.
Mr. Holgy. First time, first time caller.
So I'd say that there is a little structural challenge to how we operate for the timing around when our property casualty liability is in place. Certainly, we seek information about general planning around it during the fiscal planning process as well as around the insurance advisory process for the benefits side of it. This is kind of general and it's not indicating whether we're talking about property casualty liability or whether we're talking about medical benefits. In fiscal planning, just for information, we do talk about our benefits insurance program or self-funding program, the value of that as far as the reserve and those different components. It's less about the selection of a carrier, which is guided much more by a state hit a process for the Health Insurance Transparency Act component of it. So to answer your question, I would prefer to keep it general and we can work on building that in just from an advisory recommendation from the board, knowing that that's another place where that information is being gathered as part of the process for both of those committees really, in addition to the professional recommendations coming from our agents of record and the work that they're doing.
Okay. Thank you for, for that detail. I appreciate that. So why don't we, why don't we take what we have here? Mr. Tensing, do you want to talk to me about where it might go? We could work together with-
Sure.
Mr. Holgy.
Yeah.
Since I believe you're on FPAC, I'm on insurance advisory and-
Fair enough. They're fighting over who gets to talk about it. Nice.
I'll definitely get to talk. I know that. Anyhow, I think that, any other comments or questions on 705 before we move forward and probably bring it back next time for a third read and possible passage? Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Holgy. We'll move now to a second read of Policy 707, Commission Sales, Vending Machines and School Pictures.
All right. And so again, very minor changes to the policy, just a couple of very small updates. I'm really just talking about what to do and how to handle commission-based sales, something that is very small in our organization at this point, but definitely still has a small presence.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on?
Does the, in the, so the most substantive change that I saw was that we were changing the threshold for triggering the requirement to advertise from the 50K to 175K. Is that statutory? Got it. Thanks.
Mr. Holgy has indicated it is statutory. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Holgy. All right. Questions, comments on the second read? If you have a, a lightbulb moment later in the evening or sometime in the next two weeks, please let us know, let the administration know, and we'll get those, the edits incorporated as needed. All right. We're moving forward now. Community education, a third read of Policy 901, Community Education.
That is correct, and one for actual passage. So hang onto your seats, ladies and gentlemen. We are pushing this forward for actual passage as the board had recommended, and it took us an extra month to do this. Went to the Community Education Advisory and also the Community Education Department. Not huge substantial components, just a couple of, of small pieces. Feedback to proactively create, facilitate inclusive opportunities for all ages. And then, again, some, some minor other changes throughout, things that you have seen before and nothing significantly substantial since then, but definitely got those, got those voices and feedback that you had asked for. So with that, I present it to you for recommendation for passage.
All right. So does anyone have any questions or comments on the edits provided now that they've been through the, the respective committees and departments?
No, I just appreciate taking the time to do that. I think it's really meaningful.
Agreed. Agreed. It would be, it would be a massive error on our part to not have those, those groups review it. So questions or comments from this side of the room? If we don't have any, I could entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the community ed policy as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Baracki. Any final discussion on Policy 901? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and Policy 901 on community education is updated and approved. All right, I think we are now into new business? We're into new business. Administrative Guideline 216.1, Public Comment.
Right, and so is 216, Public Comment allows administration or requires administration to oversee public comment and how that is run. Obviously, we know from around the metro, I think we are approaching 70, school board members across the metro have resigned from positions, things that have been occurring at board meetings, have suggested that more advanced planning might be necessary. And also, we had some adjustments on that were really supported during COVID that aren't necessarily quite as needed anymore. And so we are recommending so that we have time to review and time to plan and prepare, moving sign up on the district website towards noon, and then, if needed, condensing, condensing some of that public comment if we were in a situation where things would get really long. And again, that would be something that could be had in a conversation, just a reminder that we will take things into consideration and may provide response, and we have not had that in there before, but we feel it is important to do that. And then also really just clarifying about personal attacks, because as we've seen both here and in other locations around, around, actually across the country, there have been some pretty aggressive things happening at school boards. And so just being clear in what does that mean, how would that be handled, and how do we, how do we support that open dialogue with the community and making sure that it is a safe and effective place for everyone? So we are presenting that administrative guideline, which has been worked on by Dr. Daniels in consultation with a wide range of different folks as we continue moving ourselves forward.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'd like to offer the administration on the proposed edits as listed here.
I want to thank Superintendent Nasky and Assistant Superintendent Daniels for the diligence in, in doing this. It shouldn't feel unsafe to be a public servant, and these are sad times that we are living in and timely, a timely process with this. And I'm glad to see that it's very clear that we're not changing the policy itself, we're just really tweaking the, the guidelines to make a, a, a more transparent process and that allows us to conduct our business of governing at the school district.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you're absolutely right, Paula. And if I think about sort of our collective experience as we've grown, I think there's been a, there's been a process for, for many of us of trying to find that, trying to figure out where we can, where we can get the right balance between seeking the input of our community, which I think we all genuinely and sincerely wish to hear, and also governing effectively. And so it's, it feels like a, it feels like a learning process, not only for us, but for the community as well, so that we can all figure out how to be most effective in working together, presumably to, to have a, you know, to, for us to be able, or whoever is sitting in this chair, you know, to be able to do their job in the most effective way. So I really do appreciate that Dr. Daniels and Dr. Nasky have taken this very seriously. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? I would echo the appreciation to the superintendent, but also Dr. Daniels and her patience in waiting for me and persistence in finding me. I tell people who are looking for comments or feedback from me to be very direct and never feel bad about, about reminding me that, that I owe you a reply, so please feel free. Thank you for your patience.
I think the only thing I was going to share is I, I want to make clear that this is not intended to say that people cannot and should not criticize or critique.
Correct.
Oh, correct. Absolutely.
I'm not saying any of you just, I, I think it's important that, that is also what we are here for. And this is not intending to, to change that or our expectation of being able to hear tough things and figure out what is our responsibility to do with them as a board. And so that is, that's not the intention behind this. It is, I think, to make clear what the guardrails are and to do so within legal bounds of the First Amendment, and this is a public meeting. And I think those are all things that have been very carefully considered in putting this together, so I appreciate the hard work that's gone into it.
Yep. I mean, you're absolutely right that being able to respond effectively to criticism. I mean, I feel like that's really what this policy is about, is to be able to hear that criticism and then to be able to, to be able to come up with a response that is really effective.
Well, but to be fair, it's also hot to fit that if someone chooses to deliver it within this setting. I mean, we are always available. People reach out to us routinely to, to let us know areas we could improve-
Right.
-or things we could do differently, and they do so outside of this setting, the, the public meeting setting. They, they can choose to do so, you know, as, as often as they want. We're just trying to, to make the operation of this meeting a little more orderly or to ensure that it's, it's, it's a little more orderly than perhaps it has been in certain brief episodes.
And I think there are some situations where it's very appropriate for someone to come and speak to us publicly as a board and hold us accountable to things. And I, like Crystal said, I think we are all very open to that, and that is what we're looking for in public comment. I think the other thing that is really beneficial to this is having some advance notice about the topic so that, so that our admin team can address and look into any potential issues and possibly have a, a response or at least know, you know, know how they're going to respond to that. So I think it's important to have as much information as we have, as we can in advance so that we can be transparent about what might have happened and so that if somebody is coming to us with a lot of accusations, if they aren't true, we're able to address that as well.
No, that's great. So this is, this is a guideline, not a, not a policy. Policies, you know, we usually have a very, you know, first, second, third unless something deviates from that out of necessity. So we could pass this, the recommendation is that we pass this or adopt this tonight, correct?
Yes, although again, with guidelines, you were just reviewing it.
We're just reviewing it, okay.
Correct. We typically vote on guidelines and we're doing with policies, you are reviewing it, so you can acknowledge that you have reviewed it, and that is all that's actually required.
Okay.
If you wish to vote on it as an action, you certainly can, but that is not actually required of guidelines.
I'm happy to, to, to accept it as having been reviewed. Okay, excellent. All right. Moving forward then.
There we go. Authorization for board members to substitute be employed on a casual temporary basis. For some unbeknownst reason, Mr. Paulus likes to umpire referee and even support volleyball and/or anything else he is asked to. And so having all of our board members present allows him to do that in a role where he would not just be volunteering his time. And so this would be the board approving him to perform casual part-time services, and I believe I have described most of the roles. Are there any other roles that you take on, Mr. Paulus?
No, it's mostly just sports officiating. I don't know how to drive a bus yet.
Better watch out, you said yep.
Mr. Holgy has just signed you up for training with the supervisor, so that is on the way.
But no, it's, it's just that, and so it's, right, I ran into this last spring. There was a, a cancellation for a makeup baseball game, and I can umpire, except we, we had a conversation, and so just for clarity, I declined it, and they found someone else. I could have done it for free, and I did do a subsequent, subsequent game for, on a, you know, no pay basis. The volleyball program, what happens is the parents in the volleyball program serve as line officials and get paid, and then the, the convention is they donate it to the booster club, but I can't even do that step. We can't get it, you know, get, get the donation directly to the booster club, otherwise that would be out of line, and so this would facilitate that if, if the board would allow.
Well, I will move that we authorize Board Member Tim Paulus to perform casual part-time services during this school year.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Baracki and a second by Ms. Smieszek. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. And the chair votes aye.
And now it's Holgy time.
Now it's, now, all right. So now we'll move forward. Now we have preliminary levy certification, and Mr. Holgy is with us.
Very good. Thank you very much. So we are requesting that the Board of Education certify the maximum for the levy allowed in each category and authorize the school board clerk to sign the preliminary levy certification. In addition, it's recommended the Board of Education establish the truth in taxation presentation to be scheduled for December 6, 2021, at the regularly scheduled meeting, which begins at 7:00 PM in the boardroom at the district office. at the district office at 7001 Harriet Avenue, South Richfield, Minnesota. Again, this is something that we do annually in September. At this point, we're just asking authorization to certify the maximum levy. That is what then shows up on the tax notification that goes out to individuals. The board has the opportunity to set, or the board acts on the actual levy in December after that truth in taxation hearing. Just a highlight of the current status of that maximum levy, currently that levy would be for $27,532,799.46. That may be adjusted yet with changes in enrollment or other adjustments that are still being made at the state through the MDE processing of identifying what that actual amount is. That is an increase of $842,136.08 from our current levy year, but it is five, or $269,235 less than it was two years ago in fiscal year 20. Just a reminder, last year when you set that levy, we had a number of negative adjustments that were showing up on the levy because of unanticipated reduction in enrollment one year from what we had originally projected. So we saw our levy go down, and then now it's going back up with those adjustments. Our adjustments are much less this year than what they were last year. So that's the biggest reason for that levy differential at this point. At the December truth in taxation hearing, the board will get a full report of the actual recommendations for the levy for next year, as well as an opportunity for the community to hear our current budget information and present any comments at that time at that meeting on December 6 in relation to the budget for that, or in relation to the levy for the following year. So with that, I'll respond to any questions that you have. Otherwise, we are requesting your authority to certify the maximum levy and set that truth in taxation date.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? See none on the left, on the right? We've none, and again, this step provides the budget team maximum flexibility for setting budgets. And then, as we learned last year and prior years, there are often adjustments downward from here. All right. So with that, if no one has any other questions or comments for Mr. Holgi, we could entertain a motion on the preliminary certification.
I will move that we certify the maximum levy.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye. And the preliminary levy certification is approved. Next up, we move, I mean, twice in one night, we will be talking about insurance. We have a workers' compensation renewal.
Yeah, so we have up for renewal, the workers' compensation renewal. We work with Todd Oz and Debbie Turner from Dolph Insurance Agency. Todd has been our agent of record on our workers' comp as well as property casualty liability for, I'm going to guess, 30 years plus at this point. He has worked with SFM specifically on this renewal. It is a 3.03% decrease in the premium rate, including schedule credits and experience mod adjustments. This results in an actual 0.64% projected overall reduction, taking into account the payroll changes from the 2021 year. Total projected premium is $409,773, which is $2,643 less from 2021. There's a couple of additional detailed backups just for comparison purposes on those rates included in this, but we're asking your authorization to renew that at this time.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have questions or comments on the proposed workers' compensation renewal?
The only comment I have is this can be our, this can be yours and my object to study together to determine.
Which committee gets the...
Which committee gets it, that's right.
Gets the rubber stamp.
Because this is obviously, you know, a great example of a consultant giving us a nice reduction in premium, and that's great, and we're really happy, and let's make sure that we're doing our due diligence on all this, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, compared to other things that I propose for those committees, this one is statutory. You have to have workers' compensation insurance. So there's no escaping this one. And within the broader market, it seems completely reasonable and fair from my work experience.
Yep.
Any other final questions or comments? All right, seeing here none, we could entertain a motion to approve it.
I will move approval of the workers' compensation renewal as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey and a second by Ms. Cole. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye. And the workers' compensation renewal is approved. Mr. Holgi remains in the chair, and we have some good news to consider next. The collective bargaining agreement with Education Richfield for years 2021/22 and 2022/23.
Very good. Thank you. I am pleased to recommend for your approval tonight that proposed agreement with Education Richfield for the summer, July 2021 through June 30 of 2023. We've reached a tentative agreement. That agreement was ratified by Education Richfield on Wednesday, September 8, with strong support that way. A summary of the changes is included. We say made some market adjustments on the salary schedule during the first year with varied dollar amounts on each one of the cells. No changes in health insurance or dental insurance premium contributions, 2% increase in co-curricular salary schedule, as well as some other adjustments in some of the hourly rates and extended time, daily rates of pay, and added $500 to our bilingual stipend. In the second year of the contract, we added 2% on all cells. Again, no changes to health and dental insurance premium contributions. Similarly, a 2% in the co-curricular salary schedule, and then additional adjustments in the hourly rates for summer school instructional, as well as staff development and curriculum rating. There are a variety of memorandum of agreements that we also negotiate as part of this work, as well as adjustments to some language around our VBA selection and some just different cleanup within that contract at this point. So with that, we seek your approval of that master agreement with Education Richfield.
All right. Well, thank you. For those who've been paying attention to our various agenda items through the past few meetings, we've had closed sessions on the agenda for a number of meetings in a row, and it was to discuss labor negotiation strategy on this item in particular. And so I'm very pleased that we've come to a conclusion, and great appreciation for Mr. Holgi and his team, and for also the negotiators from Education Richfield.
I want to echo that appreciation for the diligent work done by Mr. Holgi and his team, and in particular, want to echo appreciation to Education Richfield for being really a great partner, and really focusing very strongly on what's right for our students and on student success. And so I want to just specifically call out our Ed Richfield partners here.
I second that. Education Richfield has been a great partner, very student-focused, very inclusive of processes, and teachers are just really great overall, and they have this is really in the right place.
Yep.
And I say this from knowing how about a lot of other unions where we might not see that.
The senator, questions, comments?
Congratulations, everyone.
All right. Well, with that, if no one has additional questions or comments, we could entertain a motion.
I move approval of the proposed master agreement with Education Richfield. I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Smitschek and a second by Ms. Brackey. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye. And we have approved our collective bargaining agreement with Education Richfield. Excellent. And now, we have advanced to the change order section of the agenda. We have a couple. Scrolling through the extent of this contract, I should just go to the shorter version. Here we go. Change order number 24 at the middle school.
Very good. And similar to other times, I'll go through all three of these different buildings with their change orders that are associated with that. First of all, we have Richfield Middle School Facilities Project Change Order Number 24, net increase of $24,441.29, primarily around the addition of a handicap automatic door opener, some additional electrical for the cafeteria where we're going to be installing vending machines to help support our à la carte options around the programming there, as well as some miscellaneous ads for mechanical items and finishing associated with that building. That brings that project up to $17,606,973.88. Moving on to Sheridan Hills, we have facility change, facilities project change orders, numbers 25 and 26, net increase between the two of them of $48,106. Change order 25 is $22,951 for modifications to acoustical ceilings for ductwork, some washable wall panels in the dry storage room, some additional electrical in the new office location, as well as some electrical cabling to be code compliant, and some additional painting. And then we also have change order number 26 for a net addition of $25,155 for re-roofing to an existing section of the roofing near the kitchen that was originally planned to remain but needed, was in poor condition, so it needed some adjustments that way. That project is now at $10,025,746. And finally, Central Facilities Project Change Order Number 8 for a net increase of $22,193.81, primarily associated with costing, the cost of piping modifications in the tunnel due to some existing conditions and concerns that way, also some modifications to ceilings, and a credit to eliminate a portion of the Fintube radiation that was determined not to be needed. That project is now at $4,426,679.16. As we do all the time, we continue to watch what the contingency factors are, what projects are still remaining, and what availability, and we believe that we still remain on, sorry, it's 9:15 and my brain just flipped, on target for being able to finish the project, as Dr. Unoski said earlier, within budget and making modifications to the final projects moving forward.
I appreciate learning about all the different parts of our building, learning that we have tunnels. Always good to know. Didn't know we had those in some of our buildings. That's excellent. So with that, does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Holgi on either the RMS Sheridan Hills or Central Change Orders? Excellent. And so we will take them in order. We'll start with the RMS Change Order Number 24.
I'll move approval of RMS Change Order Number 24 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Tensing. Final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye. And Change Order 24 at RMS is approved. The next item is Sheridan Hills Change Orders Numbers 25 and 26.
I will move approval of Sheridan Hills Change Orders 25 and 26.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey and a second by Ms. Cole. We'll give her that tie. Any other final questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye. And we've approved Sheridan Hills Change Orders Numbers 25 and 26. And the Central Change Order Number 8.
I will move approval of Central Change Order Number 8.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Smitschek. Any final comments or questions on Change Order Number 8? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye. And Change Order Number 8 is approved. Excellent. And that concludes the action items on our agenda. We now move to advanced planning. Is there a legislative update to offer?
So I do have some information for you. And Ms. Brackey can check me on my accuracy as I report out on AMSD.
No, anxious. That was not a ready face.
Yeah, I just put you on the spot, didn't I? So just a couple of pieces from AMSD. So the first thing is, AMSD has completed their legislative survey, and there are absolutely no surprises. But the important thing for me to bring forward right now, and for our candidates also to be thinking about, is this is the time of year when we start thinking about are there any things that we would like to be prioritizing to talk about with our legislators. The AMSD priorities, and again, there are no surprises here at all. These are all familiar players, but it's indexing the formula to inflation, allowing local boards the authority to renew existing levies, reducing the special ed cross subsidy, and no new mandates. So that's where AMSD will be putting their energy in terms of the upcoming legislative session, as we, you know, sort of, kind of work with our legislators to advocate on behalf of public schools in the metro area. So I think for us in Richfield, we want to be thinking about, you know, typically, we would be traditionally having a sit-down with our legislators in January or February. So probably, you know, it's heads up to the administration to start planning that. And then maybe thinking about are there policy items, especially this will be a policy year in the legislature. And so it's a good time to be thinking about if there are educational policy items that are important to our community. For example, in the past, we have talked about MCA testing and potentially allowing high school students to move out of MCA into a standardized, to substitute a nationally standardized college entrance exam for MCA. That might be something that, you know, that had been a priority for us last year. And then the other piece, and I guess this is as much a question as anything, when will we be getting new board, new student board reps involved?
We believe they'll, we believe they'll be joining us the next minute.
All right. So we'll bring that, we'll bring that back when we have our student board reps present. Hopefully, we'll have some veterans back again, and we'll get that student input on stuff that's important to them. So that was one piece. The second piece, reporting out on a survey, AMSD commissions Morris Leatherman to sort of survey the general mood of the population in the metro region relative to K-12 education issues, and also relative to sort of general political issues. And AMSD has been commissioning this survey annually for some time. And so reporting out kind of what Morris Leatherman had found, the, sort of the general feeling is, again, this is, I think, going to resonate as not being too surprising, is that the voters that were surveyed are just exhausted. Folks are, folks are tired. We've been through a lot as a country and as a state and as a community. And so, you know, folks are just tired. And so, you know, that kind of mood is there in the electorate. And so the thing for us to be, I think, mindful of as we're, you know, thinking about our own planning, is, you know, if we do need to approach our voters, we would want to approach that with that mindfulness, that folks are, you know, folks are feeling a little bit more guarded. And the, sort of the general tolerance for government coming with the hands out is not quite what it might have been two years ago. And so, you know, there's a little bit more, a little bit less willingness to say yes, and a little bit more skepticism on what are you asking me to do. So I think that as we are planning and looking at our own expiring levies and referenda, we just kind of keep that in mind. I don't know that we have, we actually talked about this on fiscal planning last week. We don't, we've got some time.
Two years.
Yeah, we've got a little bit of time. So we don't need to necessarily get too bent out of shape right now, but just kind of keep watching, you know, watching that needle as we sort of plan on what we want to be doing. Yep. So that was the main thing. I mean, I think the rest of it was, again, really stuff that won't be surprising. You know, they found that in terms of general kind of questions that were aimed at sort of more, not necessarily K-12 specific issues, that people were moving towards the poles in terms of opinion, that, you know, polarization is increased, that the extremes are feeling more extreme, and the middle is shrinking. And that would be true on either end. And so again, not necessarily a terribly surprising result. The Minnesota Constitutional Amendment that has, that had been brought up pre-pandemic, pandemic took all the wind out of the sails on that one, but now it's kind of circulating. Pandemic took all the wind out of the sails on that one, but now it's kind of circulating, circling back again. You know, the the notion of amending the Minnesota Constitution to change the language from guaranteeing an adequate, uniform and adequate system of funding for public schools to guaranteeing a quality education in the state of Minnesota, that voters actually kind of want both. There was general support for the the idea of putting the word quality in there and making that a duty of the state to ensure a quality education. But when asked whether voters preferred adequate or voters preferred quality, they actually said, no, we want both. And so that was interesting. So we'll see if that, if that amendment has any legs to it. And that's what I've got. Crystal, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
I don't.
Well, that was thorough. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great. No, thank you. And and it is a good reminder that the legislative session last, last year was the budget one and this year is
This year's policy.
Policy. And so when we meet with our legislators in in usually what, January, February timeframe? Just to to make sure we're, you know, we're aware of that, right?
There's some funding to it, to some adjustments and some tax extra money that we might, you know, so there's, there is some funding.
There is some, yes, yes. It's no, it's not exclusive, but it's not the big one. It's not the big budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any, any questions or comments on legislative update? If not, we could move then to information and questions from the board. Ms. Cole?
I have a question, clarifying question about the COVID diagnosis numbers that we have. Because when you, Steve said four and then Mary Clarkson said 11 and then it sounded like 11 over nine versus total versus like easy whole district, you say by school. So I just wanted to.
That is by the whole district. And so the numbers were accurate as of the time we published the board packet, which I believe was three, and then we have gone up a significant number since then. And so COVID is currently more and more present.
So did we get 11 notifications between three and seven? Is that what happened?
Dr. Clarkson, hold up the microphone, please.
Thank you, Dr. Clarkson, for still being here and joining us.
I have no problem. We had several cases over the weekend and today I know, please don't quote me. It was a number of cases, over 10 cases that came in today across all of the boroughs.
Okay.
So we had some last week, we had several over the weekend, and then we had a number that came in today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And it's updated on the website on Friday at 4:30 for those numbers. At that given point in time, so what has been reported in our cases that we have contact tracing within the whole district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mary? Sorry. Are the are the regional support teams, is that whole structure still in place?
We, no, I I don't believe the regional support teams are still in place. What we do is we fill out the, it's called the REDPAC, it's a recording form for our department of health. And if we have a need to communicate with them about a particular case, we mark that and then they'll get back in touch with us. But it's, I think that that tends to do so. I don't know what structure they have.
But contact, the work of contact tracing is still being carried out by the health department as opposed to us doing the actual?
No, we do all of the contact tracing within the whole district.
Gotcha.
So principals are, principals and health services are busy.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Smitschek?
Nothing for me this evening.
All right. Ms. Malik?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Brackey?
Yes, I wanted to just share two ways in which people, board members, community, other could share input on the superintendent search for intermediate District 287. There is a virtual engagement session tomorrow afternoon, actually, from 4:00 to 4:45. And then likely of more interest, and I would love for as many people to take this who are willing, is an online survey that is very brief. It is anonymous and confidential. It's available in multiple languages and the survey is open through October 9. And so if you are interested in helping to shape the profile for the next superintendent of our partner district, intermediate District 287, you can find those opportunities and the links to the survey specifically at the superintendent search, share your views page on district287.org. And board members, I've asked the superintendent, Cassandra, to get that link to you in the next weekly communication, so you can look for it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one thing and it piggybacks on something Peter had said about the Paige Kashkari amendment. There is a Zoom call with Justice Page and President Kashkari on Thursday that I planned on attending. And the one person who's sort of organizing it, I spoke, I spoke with her and realized that that one's opinion of this is like a Rorschach test, that that depends on who you're talking to. It has broad bipartisan support. It has broad bipartisan opposition. It really hinges on, there's two main components. One is the the switch from adequate to quality education. But the other is that a paramount duty of the state to provide it. And so there is some details to be sorted out about what that means and and how that, you know, how that would actually flow through. And so I don't know. I'm curious to hear what Justice Page and President Kashkari have to say about what they think it will mean as a starting point. See what I can get there and report back.
It it seemed to me to break down to, do you trust, do you trust our legislators to to work out the details?
Correct. If you don't, if you don't, you would prefer the amendment, I think, is is what I was told. Because right now, the funding for education is entirely within the legislator, legislature's control. And this would introduce courts and others to measure if it is, is in fact quality and if they're meeting the standard of, of, you know, primary goal or primary importance or whatever the wording was. So right now, no one has, you know, it is entirely up to the legislature's discretion to fund to the level that they do. And so there, the discussion is it would perhaps morph from that. Interesting. We'll see. All right. Well, with that, we move on to future meeting dates, Monday, October 4, 7:00 PM, right here. And Monday, October 18, that will be our next meeting with public comment opportunity. Does any, do any board members have items they'd like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda that you have not previously shared? All right. Well, I won't go around the room and make you say no comment individually since you you just shook your heads at me. So with that, I believe that moves us to the the next item on the agenda, which is adjournment. And so with that, it is 9:29 PM and I will adjourn this meeting. If you all walk out the door with me, it will be adjourned. Thank you.